Good evening and welcome to the Mantino Village Board Meeting for Monday, May 3rd, 2021. Let's call the meeting to order, and if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boyce, Martin.
Here.
Dole.
Here.
Crockett.
Here.
Geske.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
We have a quorum. Tonight, for our first portion of the meeting, the only item that we have on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Tonight, we have the public hearing minutes from April 19th of 2021, as well as the regular board meeting minutes of April 19th, 2021. The minutes have been included in everyone's packet. Hopefully, everyone has had the opportunity to review them. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to weigh the reading of minutes and approve them as presented by the clerk.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dole.
Second.
Second by Phillips. Roll call.
Dole.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Boyce. Martin.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
And Geske.
I'm standing.
Motion curious. Tonight, as we do every couple of years, we have the swearing-in of officers, so in order to do that, we need to have a motion to adjourn Sunday, so we can have the swearing-in of the new officials. Do I have a motion? Motion by Martin.
I'll second.
Second by Crockett. All in favor, signify by aye.
All aye.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to be swearing in myself as the village president, Robin Batka as the village clerk, Tim Boyce is not here tonight, but we'll be swearing in Diane Dole and Sam Martin as village trustees, and Tim Boyce will either will be sworn in at the next meeting that he's here. So, to begin with, Robin, I guess I'll have to swear, I swear at you. If you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Robin Batka.
Having been elected to the office of village clerk.
Having been elected to the office of village clerk.
For the village of Mantino.
For the village of Mantino.
In the county of Kankakee.
In the county of Kankakee.
In the state of Illinois.
In the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village clerk.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village clerk.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, again. And now, we'll do the reverse.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Timothy Nugent.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of village president.
To the office of village president.
For the village of Mantino.
For the village of Mantino.
In the county of Kankakee.
In the county of Kankakee.
In the state of Illinois.
In the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village president.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of village president.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you for your.
Diane and Sam, if you guys want to come up, I'll get out of the way, and Robin will...
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Sam Martin.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of village trustee.
To the office of village trustee.
For the village of Mantino.
For the village of Mantino.
In the county of Kankakee.
In the county of Kankakee.
In the state of Illinois.
In the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of village trustee.
The duties of village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We'll have you sign.
Yeah, we need to have you sign stuff when you, if you want to do it now or wait till the end of the meeting, and I'll open it.
We'll get you, though.
Yeah. We'll go ahead and do another roll call then for the start of the new meeting.
Sure. B., Boyce. Martin.
Here.
Dole.
Here.
Crockett.
Here.
Geske.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
We have a quorum. Public participation, is there anybody in the public that would like to address the board? Seeing none, village presidents report. First of all, I just want to congratulate all the other elected officials. You know, this is our, some of us are, you know, the fifth term, we've also been here for a period of time, served, you know, some of us, 16 years, and, you know, 15 and a half, I think, maybe for Diane, and Sam, I think it's been eight. Robin's been trustee, village clerk, at a number of different occasions, so thank you for your time and for your effort, and for being part of the team that has, you know, come to do a lot of good things, I think, for the village of Mantino, and it's very, you know, fortunate that we have the opportunity to serve the community again and continue to make sure that the village makes progress over the course of the next four years. And also, the three trustees on the south side here that have been here for a long time, too, we've been fortunate enough to be able to be together for a long period of time, and I think the, you know, the public has seen a lot of, you know, good results, and that's why they keep putting us back into these positions, and we just got to make sure that we continue to make good decisions, so thank you very much for all of your service. As far as village presidents report, we have the TIF surplus checks distribution this year. As you know, at the last board meeting, we authorized TIF surplus checks to go out to all the other taxing bodies. This was part of the agreement that we made when we extended the TIF about 11 years ago, that we would distribute 15% of the TIF money back to each taxing body at the end of each year, beginning of each new year, and so this year, we don't have anybody present to collect the checks, but we will be mailing out tomorrow checks in the, to the following taxing districts in the following amounts. The Kankakee County will be getting $18,688.08. Kankakee Community College will be receiving $8,297.33. The Mantino School District will be receiving $109,278.02. The Mantino Fire District will be receiving $14,466.37. The Mantino District Library will be receiving $3,202.39. The Mantino Township Assessor will be receiving $1,100.67. Mantino Township Road Commissioner will be receiving $7,321.17. The Mantino Township will be receiving $3,140.96. And the Mantino, the village of Mantino will be receiving $15,346.22. This total is $180,841.21, and this was because of the resolution that was passed several years ago extending the TIF, and this is 15% of the TIF 1 surplus every year. So, the checks for those taxing bodies will be going out tomorrow to all those taxing districts. The next item is committee appointments. At the beginning of every new term, we have committee appointments. This year, the committee appointments are going to remain the same. As you know, we all, we switched the assignments not too long ago, or not assignments, but the fact that we basically meet as a committee of the whole, so everybody has input on every committee, but the chairman for the committees are going to remain the same. Trustee Boyce will be still chairing Public Works. Trustee Martin will be chairing Parks and Recreation. Trustee Dole will be chairing Public Safety and Health. Trustee Crockett, chairing Public Planning and Zoning. Trustee Geske, Finance, and Trustee Phillips, General Government. And then also, appointments that the mayor makes at the beginning of every year for the village officers. This year, I'd like to put before you the appointments for the 2021-2022-year village administrator, Chris LaRocque, to serve as budget officer, also Chris LaRocque, to serve as village attorney, Louis Cankar Limited, to serve as chief of police, Alan Swinford, to serve as village treasurer, Sheila Martin, to serve as village chaplain, Father Anthony Nugent, and Reverend Lance Hurley, to serve as animal commissioner, Alan Swinford, to serve as village electrician, Eric Weber, to serve as code enforcement officer, Ryan Marion, to serve as chairman of the planning commission, Francis Smith, and to serve as planning commissioners, three terms that expire this year that we're putting on for another term, of Jerry Dole, Annette Zimbleman, and Todd Creek. A three-year term for the police commission, Scott Bertrand. A two-year term for the police pension fund, Joe Grant. A five-year term for Parks and Recreation, Ray Chamberlain and Maurice Ray. The representative for the Kankakee County Convention and Visitors Bureau, appoint myself. For the Metro, River Valley Metro Representative, Jerry Pierce. For the Enterprise Zone Representative, I would appointing myself. A fire inspector, the Mantino Fire Department Chief, and the GIS Advisory Committee, Ryan Marion. So, I would accept a motion to approve those appointments for the village positions.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Crockett.
Second.
Second by trustee Geske. Roll call, please.
Crockett.
Yes.
Geske.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Dole.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Motion curious. We have a proclamation tonight, and I will read, have been requested to read this for, this is a proclamation for the 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 2nd through May 8th, 2021. Whereas the office of professional municipal clerks, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, whereas the office of professional municipal clerk is the oldest public servants, and whereas the office of professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizen, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and where professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas the professional municipal clerk continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of professional municipal clerk throughout participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is more appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Timothy O'Nugent, Mayor of the village of Mantino, do recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Professional Municipal Clerk Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Robin Batka, and deputy clerk, Darla Hurley, and to all the professional municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So, this will be signed and sent to the Professional Municipal Clerk Committee, and congratulations to our professional municipal clerk.
Thank you. Congratulations to Darla. Keeps us all straight, right?
I have nothing further. Village administrators report, Mr. LaRocque.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Committee reports, public utilities, Mr. Boyce is not here, he has a number of items on the agenda. Mr. Martin, you're going to take his agenda, Dole?
Here we go. For consideration, a motion to award the bid for the asphalt improvement project to McGill Construction Frankfurt, Illinois, for a cost of $51,126. The village hall, what this amounts to is the village hall and the food pantry parking lots need complete mill and overlay of the existing asphalt. Additionally, two other alley locations in the village are being addressed in this bid. Warning, a warning, the part of the alley east of Locust Street, between Division and Adams Street, will be resurfaced to correct a drainage issue and fix a section of degraded asphalt, and the alley west of Poplar Street, south of Adams Street, will be extended south to the village property line.
Anyone have any questions? Have we discussed this at a number of different committee meetings? This is something that's going to take place, most of it, I'd say 99%, 95% of this is at village hall and at the food pantries. Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Secondly, a consideration, a motion to award a bid for the Thies Park Fence Project to Osterhoff Vinyl Fence, Inc. of Kankakee, Illinois, for a cost of $42,013. This motion awards the bid to provide and install fencing around the new pickleball courts being constructed in Thies Park as part of a renovation project. The existing tennis slash basketball court was beyond repair, and this will replace that amenity with a new popular activity.
Yep, this is part of the project. Currently, it's got the binder course down for the asphalt. This is a 10-foot fence, and it's part of the project to finish it off. We kind of separated the, a few of the aspects of it, and after the second course will go down, in the fence will go in, and then the top coating and nets for the pickleball court.
The fence, you said, was the, we, this is going to be difficult to get. We wanted to get this bid awarded ASAP because materials get harder and harder to get.
We're finding that across the board with a lot of items, chairs, tables, fencing, a lot of, a lot of products are getting bought up and having a hard time shipping items, so...
And a 10-foot fence is what's common for the pickleball courts.
Yep, it'll keep the ball in play.
Thirdly, consideration, a motion to award the bid for section line lighting improvements to Van Mack Electric out of Rockdale, Illinois, for a cost of $74,834. As this has been discussed at several meetings, the village is installing new decorative lighting on section line road between Division and Walnut Street that will also, that will also be resurfaced as part of the MFT program. The board recognized the need to improve the main entry into our hometown, our downtown, and further extends the improvements made on First Street over the last few years.
And then, we've got these lights already, we ordered these because there was a big backlog on those, too, so this is strictly for the installation.
Correct. Lights have been purchased.
Okay.
Fourth thing for consideration, a motion to award the bid for the South Multi-Use Recreational Path to KVCC of Kankakee, Illinois, for the amount of $729,615. This is a bid awards, this bid award facilitates two sections of our multi-use path extension, expansion discussed over the last few months through the south side of the village. The path will add over one and a half miles of path for walking and biking. The third leg, which is an alternative price, an alternate price, will be paid or installed by developer Frank Bradley, Sr., as part of the enclave expansion.
Again, this is a project we've been discussing now for probably a year and a half after we completed the bike paths and walking paths on the north side, and especially this year with the COVID situation, or last year, we, there was an awful lot of usage of that. This is to try to connect all of our parks on the south side of town together, and then eventually, we'll try to be doing a path to, you know, going up on, connecting, you know, the, you know, all the paths together, so somebody, you know, a resident in the community could get on a bike path or a walking path, and basically walk anywhere from the north to the south throughout the community at some point in time. So, this is the next leg in that.
Okay, fifthly, ordinance 21-02, an ordinance approving a license agreement to farm 10 acres of land in the village of Mantino, Kankakee County, Illinois. Based on the projected timing of our future public works facility, the village will be entering into an agreement to allow this farmer to continue to farm the soon-to-be-purchased 10-acre site. Without that farming activity, the village would have to expend significant funds to keep the weeds from growing.
Yes, it's kind of self-explanatory, and we're in the, you know, the planting stages for the public works garage, but we don't realize, we don't think that, you know, we're going to be doing any earthmoving or anything until, hopefully, earliest later this year, so this will keep the weeds down and let the farmer take care of that 10-acre parcel.
Ordinance number six, number ordinance 21-03, an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property surplus municipal equipment. This is to surplus a pickup truck being replaced by a new one that was budgeted and ordered last fiscal year.
Yep, it's a 2008 pickup truck with a plow. It's a F-250, so we're replacing it with a, a new F-250 with a plow. 13-year-old truck, we're just keeping our fleet younger, you know.
How are you going to dispose of this?
We are going to, it'll be a trade-in to Ford, and they're going to give us a price back on that.
That's it. So, let's see, our next public works meeting will be Tuesday, 5:25, 21, at 7:00 a.m., right here.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And properties and recreation, do you have anything for that?
No, nothing, nothing old, nothing new. The next Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be Wednesday, 5:19, at 7 o'clock, with a 6:30 pre-meeting to be known.
We might go to Thies again, see, see the progress.
And play a little pickleball.
There you go.
That's it.
Do we have a target date on the completion of the pickleball? Have any other...
I'll double-check with the, part of it was ordering the fence, so depending on the lead time, it might be one month out from today.
So, we're looking to play pickleball this summer, for sure?
Yes, oh yeah, it'll be done for the summer.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Public Safety and Health, Mrs. Dole.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any actual items on the agenda tonight. My next Public Safety and Health meeting is Wednesday, May 12th, at 7:00 a.m. here in the village boardroom. One, we have a couple of safety tips. To the Mantino residents, it's springtime in the air, everyone's out cleaning their yards, washing their cars, it's just, it's been beautiful outside. Let's talk about the inside. When was the last time you checked the date on the back of your smoke or carbon monoxide alarm? And if it's five years old, it's time to change it out. To Mantino residents, the Mantino Fire District is offering free smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, weather radios, 9-volt batteries for the smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, and then your green address signs to assist the fire and police in finding your residents in an emergency. Also, I want to remind everybody, the Mantino Police Department wants to remind residents to be wary of roos, burglaries, and scams. Recently, a Mantino resident was a victim of a roos burglary. Such crimes usually take place in the spring or fall and target elderly people who live alone. Here's what happens. These offenders usually travel in pairs, the one offender distracting the homeowner while the second offender enters the home to search for steel cash, jewelry, and other valuable items. These offenders use many storylines, including inquiries about the homeowner's water supply or pressure, informing the homeowner there is electrical problem, offers to repair gutters, fences, or tree trimming and landscaping, blacktop driveway repair, false statements about problems at the neighbor's house, inquiries about homes for sale in the neighborhood. If you have scheduled an appointment with the contractor, it's a good idea to ask for a business card or company ID, and to check to see if the person's vehicle or uniform has the company's logo on it. If a solicitor comes to your residence prior to answering the door, attempt to locate and remember what kind of vehicle he or she is driving, make, model, color, and type. Further, make a mental note of the person's attire and physical characteristics. Roos or distraction burglaries are becoming more prevalent. Homers must always be wary of offers that sound too good to be true, and cautious of strangers that, who attempt to charm you into buying something. If someone you don't know knocks on your door and asks you to step out of your home for any reason, either lock all doors before exiting and take your key with you, or don't comply. If you are suspicious at all, call 911 immediately. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Dole. Planning and zoning, Mr. Crockett.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda this evening. We do have a planning and zoning committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 25th, 7:00 a.m. in the village boardroom, and the next planning commission meeting has been canceled originally scheduled for the 11th. That's all I have for this evening.
Mr. Crockett, finance, Mr. Geske.
Thank you, Mayor. I have ordinance 2101, an ordinance amending Title III Business Regulations, Chapter 7 of Itinerant Merchants by changing Section 3-7-4 License Fees, the municipal code for the village of Mantino. We've discussed this on a couple of different committee meetings, both, I believe, in Public Works, as well as in the Finance, and this is dealing with basically food trucks and things in the community, trying to make it a little more business-friendly for businesses that are in town, in setting fees appropriately for them. So, that's the first item I have. Resolution 2101, a resolution approving a TIF facade renovation construction agreement in connection with TIF financing area number one with Patrick Wilder of All Automotive, Inc. at 156 North Locust Street. During our last meeting, he brought in drawings of what he's planning to do, putting an extension onto the building that will match his current facade. Also, on the payment of bills, the amount of $80,255.48, which includes TIF bills out of TIF District Number 1 of $9,000, and our bills authorized and paid between board cycle were $250,749.92. Our next finance committee meeting scheduled for May 12th, at 7:00 a.m., and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Geske. General Government, Mr. Phillips, do you have anything tonight?
I have nothing on the agenda, Mayor.
So, the items that we'll be voting on in the consent agenda tonight are as follows. Item number one is a motion to take a, under old business, is nothing, under new business, is ordinance 2101, an ordinance amending Title III Business Regulations, Chapter 7, Itinerant Merchants by changing Section 3-7-4 License Fees, the municipal code for the village of Mantino. Item number two is Resolution 2101, a resolution approving a tax increment facade renovation and construction agreement in connection with the TIF financing area one for Patrick Wilder of All Automotive, Inc. at 156 North Locust Street. Item number three is ordinance 2102, an ordinance approving a license agreement to farm 10 acres of land in the village of Mantino, Kankakee County, Illinois. Item number four is ordinance 2103, an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property surplus municipal equipment. In the warding of bids, a motion to award a bid for the asphalt improvement project to McGill Construction of Frankfurt for a cost of $51,126. Item number two is a motion to award a bid for Thies Park Fence Project to Osterhoff Vinyl Fence, Inc. Kankakee, for a cost of $42,013. Item number three is a motion to award the bid for the section line lighting improvement to Van Mack Electric out of Rockdale, Illinois, for a cost of $74,834. Item number four is a motion to award a bid of South, for the South Multi-Use Recreational Path to Kankakee Valley Construction Company of Kankakee, Illinois, for a cost of $729,615. Finally, a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $80,255.48, of which 9,000 are TIF 1 bills. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be voted on individually? Seeing none, I would accept the motion to take a single roll call vote on the question of passage of the agenda items as read.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Crockett.
I'll second.
Second by Geske. Roll call.
Crockett.
Yes.
Geske.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Dole.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Motion curious. I'd accept the motion to approve by ominous vote the ordinances, resolutions, motions, and orders contained in the consent agenda as read.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dole, second by Martin. Roll call.
Dole.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Geske.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Motion curious. Comments tonight? Mr. Martin, do you have anything you want to talk about?
I've said enough, I'm good. I've said enough, I'm good.
More than normal. Mr. Dole?
Yes, just to remind everybody, softball and baseball season have started over at Heritage Park, so if you're looking for something to do on Monday or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, night, day, on Saturdays, come on over and watch some, some young kids have a lot of fun and show their talents, and also wish Robin and Happy Mother's Day on Sunday.
Well, thank you, Diane. Same to you.
Also, speaking of Heritage Park, too, we've got some new parking lot lights over there, and they just got put up last week and got turned on, so the parking lot should be a lot brighter when people are going there, you know, after dark, so hopefully, people will make, will notice the difference. We had some lights there before that they were solar lights, and they just didn't put off the amount of, you know, light to be able to cover the entire parking lot, so these, I think, are going to be a lot, a lot better for people leaving the park later at night. And we do have a lot of night games that go on, close, you know, get done at around 10 o'clock.
The Kelmeyer Field also has brand-new lights as well.
Yeah, and that was all a project that was a solar project upgrade to the, or not solar, but the LED project.
Correct.
Good. Good. Thank you, Mrs. Dole. Mr. Crockett?
I just want to congratulate the newly elected officials and look forward to accomplishing many great things in the years to come.
Thank you. Mr. Geske.
Same thing. Congratulations. Just, just one term, right, Mayor?
Yeah, that's what we said, four terms ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, in 2005, when we, when we were both, you and I both started here, we couldn't envision, you know, where we would be in 2021. So, appreciate the opportunity to serve and everybody serving with us. Mr. Phillips?
I'd say for me, and I wish all the ladies a happy Mother's Day.
The only thing I have is, again, as the weather is getting nicer and we see more and more golf carts out, please make sure that your golf cart is registered. You can go through the drive-up window at the village hall and get your golf cart registered. If it's been registered before, that'll just be a renewal. If you have a new golf cart or new to you, you do have to contact the police department and go up to the police station, have that golf cart inspected for the very first time. Make sure that you have copies of the bill of sale, copies of your insurance. And all the rules apply to golf carts just like they do to everything else. I know there's a lot of people out there thinking that there's, you know, young kids that are driving the golf carts. Well, you know, they are. They're, hopefully they're 16 with a driver's license, but they're still young kids. But they, you know, they, they do require 16-year-old or people with driver's license for the golf carts. And please continue to obey the rules just like you would if you were driving a vehicle on the street. We have been very fortunate, you know, with all the golf carts that we have and all the, you know, the people that are driving them, enjoying them at night. We've had very few incidents and we really want to keep it that way. We want to make sure that, you know, everybody can enjoy the ability to have their golf cart and drive around town, but do it in a, in a safe fashion. So, if you haven't gotten registered, please do so. You'll get your new, your new maple leaf. It's green this year. And at some point in time, the police will be, you know, be stopping people to make sure that they're registered. So, please get it done in advance. I have nothing further, so I accept a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion by Dole.
Second.
Second by Geske. Roll call.
Dole.
Yes.
Geske.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming and for watching. And don't forget to sign your.